May call the 2025. Roll call Jim Bryant here.
Theresa Aronstein.
Here.
Kayla Anderson.
Here.
Rachel Schonfelder.
Here.
Jennifer Tiff.
Here.
Bob Dasha.
Here.
And we are missing Jeremy Canning tonight and Brian Reeser is here. Do I have a motion to approve the meeting agenda?
So.
A motion by Miss Schonfelder.
Second.
Second by Miss Tiff. All in favor of approving the agenda?
Aye.
Move. All right, let's start it off with superintendent. So this will just carry through with the entire thing. One thing to note is typically on the workshop, we don't have items that we vote on, but in this particular case, we can do this. First two items on here are resolutions. First one would be nonrenewals. All right. Yep, so on this, so we talked about this last time we had our meeting. So we have some nonrenewals that are one nonrenewal that is taking place. So on this one, I recommend approving a nonrenewal of probationary teacher paid for said due to the need for the district to reduce expenditures for next year FY 26. That would require a vote of agreement. And it's the resolution, so it'll be a roll call vote. All right. Any discussion?
I'll make a motion.
Oh, yeah.
I'll make a motion to approve the nonrenewal of probationary teacher paid for said due to the need for the district to reduce expenditures for this year 26.
Go ahead, second.
I'll second.
Motion by Miss Schonfelder, second by Theresa Aronstein. Jim Bryant, how do you vote? All right, first off, any discussion on this?
I'll listen.
And there's possibility that they may have a voting come up, so we'll see. Jim, are you vote?
Ah, I thought we were doing discussions.
Oh.
He said first.
I said, was there any discussion? I don't, I don't think there was any.
I vote aye.
Ms. Aronstein?
Aye.
Kayla?
Aye.
Rachel?
Aye.
Jennifer?
Aye.
And I vote aye as well. Motion. The resolution passes. So the next item there would be an unrequested leave of absence. So in this instance, relatively similar, only now this is an individual who is tenured, so it's a different process. So I recommend a motion to approve the resolution to place Andrew Richardson on unrequested leave of absence due to the need for the district to reduce expenditure.
Can you tell me where that information, I was sort of reading the name, not who it was. It was not in our packet at all.
Right.
I thought, I thought there was just a small list that was there. So if that wasn't, then I'd.
The nine tenure teachers were, there were two listed.
Yeah, there's two, there's two nine ten. There's the other one from my building, it's special ed. Okay, boom, we can fix that. Okay, so right now, Bill, you want that hand that you're with?
So that was not, that, that was supposed to be in our board packet, but it's not?
Yeah, so that's, I don't know what happened there. Check on, please unsee while we, while we.
I mean, I like understand not wanting to have that on board going last week. But it would have been nice if we had.
Yes, well, like you said, somewhere.
I'll make a motion to approve the resolution placing Andrew Richardson on unrequested leave of absence due to the need for the district to reduce expenditures for this year 26.
Go ahead, second.
My second.
Motion by Miss Schonfelder, second by Kayla Anderson. Any discussion on this before we vote?
Well, I just sort of said, it's not easy and fun to do this. Great perspective gratitude for the work that was done here.
What is his position here? He's a business teacher? Shop, shop teacher at high school? Yep. There's no further discussion. We'll go ahead and vote in. Mr. Bryant?
Aye.
Ms. Aronstein?
Aye.
Ms. Anderson?
Aye.
Ms. Schonfelder?
Aye.
Ms. Tiff?
Aye.
And also both aye, resolution passes. Okay, so we're gonna have to add the second one of the nonrenewals. And my fault on this, what ended up happening was this individual has been on leave since way last fall. I knew that I had them on here, but I didn't get that in. So we'll just have a second resolution. Okay, that'll read exactly like the first one did, and I'll give you the name of that individual. So I recommend approving the nonrenewal of probationary teacher Renee Christensen. Her name is not. Hendrickson. Thank you, Mr. Pukes. Again, my apologies, her name Hendrickson. Do the name for the district for use expenditures for FY 26. Individual was Renee Hendrickson, she has not been with us since about October.
I'll make a motion approving the nonrenewal of probationary teacher Renee Hendrickson due to the need for the district to reduce expenditures for this year 26.
I'll second.
Motion by Miss Schonfelder, second by Ms. Tiff. Any discussion on the resolution before voting?
Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Bryant?
Aye.
Ms. Aronstein?
Aye.
Rachel?
Aye.
Jennifer?
Aye.
Jennifer, both aye, resolution passes. Again, my apologies for the pommes. Well, next item there is literacy work in the high school. Mr. Pukes is here to give some.
Good evening, everyone. Board, I know many of you actually were here on December, even though you had not officially taken your seat yet. I am going to present a presentation here. You should have also had two documents in your board book. Let me know if you did not receive both. One was a full length letter from Stacy Schultz, who was one of the members that was coaching. The other one was from, just a one pager from Bethany Jason, who was also coaching with us. And so if you recall in December, we presented to you about the literacy work that we actually began early in October. This is in relationship to the READ Act. And so I'm just going to ground you a little bit back in that work, right? So why literacy, why now? The READ Act was voted in Minnesota state legislation. Our special ed teachers are already participating in that training now. Legislation is still trying to figure out how to make sure it's paid for and funded the right way. And yet there is still legislative action that means we have to get ready for it, no matter what timing it means for. And at the end of the day, it shouldn't require legislation to make sure our kids are literate and reading. The bottom line is, is if you look at some of the articles that have been published lately and the facts behind literacy here in the state of Minnesota, even though Minnesota pride itself has been one of the top states for education in this country, our literacy rates are actually falling significantly. A lot of this can be attributed to COVID, but we have to get busy with this. So as you see in that bottom line there, that one of our Red Wing coaches made the observation that nearly 50% of the students that she was working with in ninth grade struggled to decode multi syllabic words. I just got an example of that up there for you. So the word is unbelievable and being able to decode what that actually means and what that means for actually understanding what they're reading. We take that for granted, those of us that are literate, a word that we have just memorized, completely understand what it means. If you did not know what that word meant, would you understand the sentence that it was in? And how to comprehend what you're reading about? And do that over and over and over again for words that have more than one syllable and where our kids are at with that. So this is what kind of prompted us to like really start digging into what else could we do? And with the bare minimum that we have, we don't actually have funding for literacy coaches at the high school. I want to remind you of that as well. And so I have a special ed teacher that I gave an additional prep to, reworked the schedule. Case managers took on a little bit more so that we could free up this special ed teacher who is also licensed as a principal, who's also licensed as a literacy coach, reading specialist, which is pretty rare, very fortunate to have her. The other teacher is an EL teacher that with her schedule, I was able to give her a prep instead of a supervisory time. And so we have the right to give them duty time in ways in which makes sense. She was willing to take that on as coaching as well, so had these two individuals be able to pair together and work on this coaching as one hour of their day. This is what some of our initial data was. So back in the fall, we started begin, beginning to look at this. This is our Fastbridge data, where our kind of our reading MCA proficiency data is at. Our access data is specific to our EL population students, what their, some of their subscores were. And if you can see just some of those initial numbers, it's, you know, it's below 50% across the board is what you're kind of looking at. And we are struggling with literacy here at the high school as well. This is not uncommon in the state of Minnesota right now. This is why the READ Act was not really a hard one to push through legislatively. It is a great need and the science of reading is proven to work and yet just hadn't caught on in the state of Minnesota yet. Thankfully, we have an individual in Stacy Schultz that actually is trained in the science of reading and was able to help bring some of that in here. So this is what our theory of action, our team came up with this, working together back in the fall, that if we improve our teacher capacity around using just language goals, a very, very, very low level entry point, that it would help our students with their academic literacy tools and that students would do better accessing curriculum in every classroom. As we got working, so like I mentioned Stacy Schultz, Bethany Jason, they're not here this evening. I can't praise them enough. If you have time, please write them a personal email. They did far beyond the one hour that was asked of them because this matters to them individually, not only for the students they individually serve through their responsibilities, but for our whole school building. They did a ton of PD planning. They developed over five or six professional learning experiences for our teachers in the building throughout this entire school year, presented, coached. Anytime they could find time to coach with teachers, observe teachers and did work with them. You'll find evidence of that in the letters they wrote and some of this stuff we're going to see throughout this, this action. So in the December board meeting, this is what we talked about, what we would be doing, working with individual teachers on lesson plans, modeling, demonstrating best practices, working with departments, building professional development and gathering data along the way. That's what we said we were going to do. Throughout the year, we also had things that came up because in K-12 systems and public education, there's other, always other mandates. So we made sure, how could we incorporate that into what we are doing, right? We want to focus on literacy, but not lose sight of the fact that we have other things going on and there is a relationship between them all. If there's anything for teachers, if you ask them, please don't add to my plate. My plate is like pouring over already. Help me understand how it relates to what I'm already doing. So when we did the AIPD, it actually became a big sell for our literacy work in these language goals because it made our teachers' lives a lot easier in developing their language goals. Because it was initially kind of a struggle for them. And so when I did, when we did the AIPD with Tyler in February 17th with all staff, we had our teachers already in mind with that, but then on the 24th, that AIPD that we developed in-house was specifically related to the language goals and they got to spend more time doing just that, using AI tools. They also helped model lessons and reviewed student work throughout the year during our little mini PD sessions. Just so you know, mini PD was 30 minutes at a time on a Friday. That's how I found PD because we don't have PD time. That's supposed to be our operational meetings. We use it for PD as often as we can. We collected walkthrough data and then again, Fastbridge is administered three times a year. And so we're using that data as well as we're doing that. And then the access data as we did the, we did testing throughout the year. In addition to the AI professional learning, there was this need for us to do a whole building PD around community. And so two of the board members were able to come in and attend that PD on February 7th and participate with us. And that was with some good friends of mine, I consider them family, Dr. Newhu Sims and Hannah Storm. They brought another colleague with them, Katie Knutson, they're all educators. Dr. Newhu Sims now works for Minnesota Department of Education with restorative practices. And we just built community. We spent the entire day doing that and it directly related to this concept of like what we're doing, what we're here, what our purpose is, how we can help our teachers. It fed perfectly into the AI in the sense of like, we got feedback from our teachers about like, how can we lighten the load? How can we make our work more efficient? And so we made a point to make sure that we gave them space for that. Of course, my computer wants to know if I'm talking. And that was just a whole day of like really helping bridge the gap of the literacy work that we were doing throughout the year. This kind of gives you a trend of what was going on. It's a little tough for you to see, but again, you know, we really began this back in October. This is the timeline. We did an initial full staff PD on November 1st. That was our full, our first full length PD. That was a half day of four hours. We had a couple of small ones in between. We presented in December to you. We did a PD on January 3rd that was longer than the normal Friday, where our staff had the opportunity to like really sharpen their language goals at length with Stacy and Bethany. That's when we really began to see teachers kind of like turn the corner in willingness to like work with and like ask for help. And then we saw a greater threshold of that once we did the Soul Space PD, the February 7th day, which is really just focused around strengthening ourself as a community. AI, Bob and I are actually having a conversation. I had a teacher interrupt us that I thought there was some sort of critical emergency because she never interrupts in situations that's not a critical emergency. And she was just that excited about the AI thing that was going to help her with her workload. And so that was kind of an exciting moment that day. As I mentioned, we did a second PD specifically related to our literacy work. And then our coaches have been working throughout the spring regardless of this other PD that's been going on and continuing the literacy work throughout. We ended the year with doing a staff survey from them just last week, asking them what their reflections were on the year. And then here I am here today presenting again on where we're at. So here's just a couple of quotes, just pullouts from what they said in that survey. I had an open in question for them to respond. And so one teacher responded with, I'm having more fun with topics I've taught for years. A lot of times teachers are teaching the same thing year after year after year. But when they had to spend time thinking about what they're doing, why they're doing it and developing a language goal about it, it got them excited again, reminded them why they're doing this. It was then refocused back on students and how do students understand it? How do they understand the key words that we take for granted? Sentence frames help guide students understanding. Our elementary teachers who do this probably every single day. Oh yeah, sentence frames, of course, why wouldn't you be doing that? But for high school teachers, that's kind of out of the norm, but it's a good practice. It's a best practice. Our kids still need it as well. And then a teacher mentioned about clarifying my purpose in the lesson, like, like reminding me why I'm here, what I'm doing, what I'm supposed to be doing. It becomes this like written cue for them as well and helping them stay engaged exactly on what the purpose of this lesson is for the day. And that's just a couple snapshots. I could give you the full package of what that was as well. If any of you are familiar with buy-in in any new thing, there's this concept of like getting everyone on board with something. Sometimes it takes two to three years to get folks to do an initiative, especially to engage with coaches. Literacy coaches often struggle to get people on board, like to get the majority beyond 50%. Because again, for teachers, it just feels like one more thing I have to do. How is this helping me? But as you see in just a six month period with just one hour a day, Stacy and Bethany were able to get teachers saying that this was helping them. They felt like it was maybe helping them. And then they found the coaching very useful, like 35% found it to be very, very useful. There's some anecdotes in there that are really deep and meaningful about. One teacher actually just came to me today and shared all the moments she was crying and frustrated, but kept engaging with Bethany and Stacy and how much time they took with her. And then one of her quotes is up there about like how much it means for her to teach these lessons she's been teaching for years in a different way and think about them a little bit differently. The lessons that we learned through this again is this aspect of trust and feedback that the culture is growing. We are heading in a positive direction around our entire staff really buying into what we're doing. It does take time, like make no mistake about it. When we took the data of simply asking how many staff are actually posting their language goals? So my ask was about halfway through the year was, Kate, you've been practicing these language goals. You gotta do it for at least one class period a day, every day. Low level ask. Because there's already a lot asked of them and this is a new concept. I had more than half doing it. Even though I collected email addresses, teachers were very honest about like, did I not post them? Because the question was zero or inconsistently. I didn't want people saying one if they weren't really doing it every single day. But I also had quite a few teachers that not only were doing it for every single class period, they said they were doing it for every single class period, every day. And keep in mind, they teach multiple preps, which meant they wrote different language goals for different classes every single day for, you know, five to seven periods a day, depending on what was going on for them. I really encourage you to take the time to read Stacy's letter. Who is the certified like literacy instructor, reading instructor? We're really, really lucky to have her. We have a lot of staff like her that have like multiple licenses on staff and have a lot of capabilities. The truth is, is like, it's tough to present right after we've just made cuts. It is tough to lose people that add value to our system. And then also know that there's this out there where like, what could Stacy and/or Bethany do if that was just their full-time job? If that was just their full-time job? I really do believe that we need to invest in someone who can truly support around literacy, who is an expert. That is not a common field that folks are experts in. Our teachers are thankfully going through this training and they're, they're building up their skills around it. But there's not a ton of experts in that field and we will need more of it honestly, based on what our data is reporting. Our staff are building their confidence and they're, they're feeling good about the use of this literacy tool. But they're also very aware that like literacy is not a one size fits all. So like this basic language goal that we're asking them to do, our kids are in very different places with very different needs. For example, some teachers thought this meant just to translate the goal into whatever language was present in the room, without actually really understanding, going back to that very first piece that like, even if you translate the word understandable, that they don't know how to decode it, like the skill of decoding is still missing. So the translation is not enough in supporting the kid's skill because they're missing, missing some very basic literacy skills from the beginning. These are recommendations that came out from teachers, our coaches, like these are their asks. Coaching was effective. They really wish Stacy and Bethany had more time with them. There was an ask for department-based literacy PLCs. That's my line underneath there, only if there's a full-time coach that can help facilitate it. PLCs really need coaches that can help guide that work. We want to ensure that the work we've already begun here at the high school is aligned with what the district will ask of us in the future associated with letters. And then obviously, we did not collect any student voice data in this. Surveying students is a unique thing here in Red Wing. But those of you that have gotten to know me, know that it's also the most important voice that we need to capture in this work. And so I look for new ways of doing that in the future. And then just in closing, you know, literacy is a tool. It's a key for so many to be successful in life and we take it for granted. We have a lot of kids that are very creative at getting by and passing off and acting as if they have skills that they truly do not have. And then they arrive in a place where they do not have it. Quite often, kids go into a two-year or four-year school in college and end up being put in remedial classes because they lack the skills at the college level. And so there's a lot to be said about that. And it's not just an English teacher's responsibility. Going back to the one size fits all, you saw up there art, FIAID, like there had to be a little bit of convincing. I remember, you know, 20 years ago, when I was a physical education teacher and my kids looked at me like I was crazy because, you know, four days a week, we're out doing actual physical activity associated with our lessons and learning. And one day a week, we're in the classroom and we were doing literacy work and kids were not always happy with me about that, but I knew that it mattered. And it is every single person's responsibility and it's your responsibility too. And so I want to make sure that we keep presenting around this and keep you aware of what we're doing and make sure you're aware of like, when we're making financial choices, like are we putting our resources where our greatest need is? And when there's a decision, like an opportunity to potentially have a literacy coach and it makes sense because the data says it makes sense that we, we take advantage of that in the future. Any questions for folks, from folks? Yeah.
So can you remind me when, so the READ Act, is there a grade that that ends the requirements for that?
No.
Or is that, that's all the way through?
It's all the way through.
But we're in phase one.
We're in phase one of it. Yeah, high school got pushed back by year two.
They're supposed to start in the fall for Gen Ed at the high school. We got pushed back in the fall 26. One of the main reasons actually, I think, is letters have now actually come out with a secondary professional development, which is what I'm guessing will be on, like will be available as other choices made in June as well. But letters just released a brand new secondary science grade training within the last couple of months.
Now that's concerning that we have 50% of our scores have decoding issues, how they got that far without?
They're missing more than just that. That's where some of the tools that we have now, like Fastbridge is a very useful tool, but like the tools that we do have at hand and as we're, I mean, there's some very positive things that are going on with letters, for example. You know, Mike was able to share out around the scores around second grade literacy work and it's really impressive to see like what is happening. So that's good for the future, but there's the now. I remember getting my high school diploma and no joke, if you looked at the back of my high school diploma, it said, if you feel like this student that graduated from Chandler High School is deficient in any skills, feel free to send them back to Chandler High School. Imagine if that was the case in this day and age, like what that would mean financially to a school district. And how are we holding a high standard? Because I know we all expect the best, but if we're not aware, what are we doing?
Have we seen, so have you had some of the development days like February and March, like you said? Have we had any Fastbridge testings post those that reflect any improvement in the scores that would be related to that?
I would say that the professional learning that we've done so far is not a high leverage piece yet for the high school at least. I can't speak for what the elementary's done with, I'd be curious to see what Fastbridge looks like after elementaries have done this letters work for over a year, actually plus, because they were actually doing it before it became a thing.
And we're also in the middle of the spring fast window actually.
Yeah.
So we don't have, like we're in the middle of testing right now. The window for spring closes May 25th. So we won't have our like end of year data until then. The window's open right now for FAB as well. And part of what you look at secondary is when you think of when secondary EL teachers went to college, they probably didn't learn a lot about biology instruction or different things like that as much. And that's really where you need the instruction to lie for some of those missing multi-syllabic instruction. And so that's part of that, but unfortunately, since the state did delay that training for teachers.
Rachel, you know, I'm always more than happy to accept the challenge. If you want to fund a literacy coach, I'll gladly come back here and show you the numbers at the end of the year. I think I've proven myself already this time. You had another question?
Um, no.
All right.
Your full-time literacy coach?
I don't have one.
I know you don't. If you have, would it be for all the schools or just for ones?
That's expensive. That's expensive. That's a really good question. I think that the district would have to discuss what that looks like. When you're talking about coaching in multiple buildings, I'll give you an example. If you look back at my resume, I was a coach in Osceola area schools. And in that situation, I had five buildings and my coaching actually only involved coaching principals for the most part. Sometimes I would coach teachers. That was very taxing. When I was in Minneapolis Public Schools, I was a coach paid out of, what's it called? The Q comp and I had 16 schools and I did 1,000 observations and coaching that year. And that was very taxing. I didn't develop relationships. I don't know that I had any movement in teacher practice for the most part. I would say that they should focus on finding a good candidate and focus it in a, in a specific area and measure it as Rachel was asking. And if it paid for itself, then just, it justifies expanding the position to cover secondary, I'd say one secondary, one elementary personally.
So.
2.0.
2.0.
Yeah.
You talked about the ninth graders on the unbelievable that, but does it start earlier?
Yeah, it starts, yeah, I mean, those are skills. Yeah, it starts, yeah. I mean, those are skills that kids should really be, I mean, but Alex Jen has helped me with that one, but yeah, they should have that leave in elementary school. Upper elementary.
So what do you think happened? You know, is this something we just started testing for? I mean, why all of a sudden do we have all these kids at only 50%? Did we not measure it before? Or we didn't have a, a coach before?
Uh, no, you, you have multiple factors. I don't think you can put it on any one thing. One, you have COVID, like you have COVID where kids missed skills because you didn't have the ability to sit with kids in small group and do small group instruction, uh, to make corrections, uh, through readers workshop models that would nor- normally have occurred. Um, I also think that like, think about it in the other world, aspect of the world in which, um, uh, you know, you've worked in, we're like in medical fields, like until we realize that we can diagnose for something, we don't know that we can diagnose for it, right? Uh, dyslexia screeners have improved and like, we're aware that more kids have dyslexia now than we've ever known before. Uh, and so there's a number of factors there. I don't think you need to pinpoint it to any one thing. I think you just need to be aware that there's an issue that needs to be resolved at this point. I don't think there's necessarily anything wrong. Um, you know, I have a personal philosophy on that, which is this aspect of, uh, social promotion. Uh, we tie education to grade levels. We tie college to four years. Why does every four-year degree have to be a four-year degree? Why does it take four years to learn? Philosophy and four years to learn business? I don't know. Figure that one out. So learning is learning, like the most important thing is like, do we have an individual plan for every single student? And understand where they're at and what they need and how to help them. I'll bring it back to AI. I'll bring it back to the opportunity that maybe exists there of how do we, um, have like a coach and a turtle, a tutor that's personalized to every single student? Um, and get teacher time back. It's why I say no to a lot of things sometimes that are asked of teachers. Because they need the opportunity to work more with kids one-to-one. And, and they, they do know their, they know their skill, they know their content, they know what kids need. It's just often the time, it's just often the time. Like when I think about our math teachers teaching something, them trying to get a lesson presented in like 10, 12 minutes, so they have the time to try to get around to as many kids as possible to help with the skill. Uh, that's, that's where it's at. Cause we have 45-minute class periods right now on a seven-day day. I often weigh the option of like going back to a block schedule where they could get the time in. You know, are we developing critical thinking skills? Are we just trying to get through all the content that they say we have to get through? So it's a tough decision. Sometimes people have different philosophies around that. So there's, there's no one thing, um, it's just really, really important. Do you know where every single kid is at? Uh, I, I don't think asking why is what we have time for, like it's really important for someone else to look at that. For me, as a high school principal, I have four, five years to get them where they need to be for graduation and make sure they have the skills. It's not on the back of our diplomas, but it's still our responsibility. I'm signing that diploma. I'm responsible for it.
Why is the four-year degree required on some things?
Yeah. It's a good business model. It's a very good business model.
Talk about the whole education system now where you need to look at it from a hundred years ago and more and now. They have to keep going down this road.
Careful when you invite me to the table.
Well, I know, I know you weren't done talking.
Just a workshop. Hey, you're asking me questions. I, I chose to remain silent.
No, it just makes you think outside the box on the whole education piece. Structured, how it's run, how it's needs to be looked at periodically.
Well, we, I, I am happy to add, um, and Wednesday enrichment that is for just the school board to have a conversation with me. The public is welcome. We can do that every Wednesday if you like, as part of our 124 to 154 time in the high school. Come on by, we can talk about whatever you like to talk about. Any other questions?
What was that? Wednesday is 154?
124 to 154 is the enrichment time.
Sorry, I missed that one.
You're very welcome to come by if you want to come participate in a class with me. Paul Hartman and I have often talked about leading the class like that.
Full-time period for that time?
Yeah, it's just our 30-minute enrichment time that kids choose. There's a lot of great things happening during that time. You should come by anytime you like. All right, sounds like I get to be done. Sweet.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
All right, sports offering. So with this, uh, Sean Bell were asking question about these last month about the offerings that we currently have in relation to, uh, schools that are our size and kind of region. And so with the Hartman, uh, put together, uh, this graphic that the board has in front of them. We wanted to make sure that these are reads, so that ended up being, uh, provided there. So basically, um, we looked at schools that have somewhat similar high school enrollment. So when he did this, he used the Minnesota State High School League enrollment for next year. So here in Red Wing, according to the high school league enrollment, and you may wish to add how that's calculated, but we have 529 kids as our state high school league. So then we looked at a number of schools that were kind of in a similar range. So some of those are bigger than us, some of those are smaller than us. So Red Wing was kind of in the middle. They went from Austin, which had a enrollment of 1,159, down to Cannon Falls, which had 302. So on that, we just put together the primary sports, the sports that are offered there, of which there's quite a batch, like there's 21, 20 or 21, must be 20 I think, if it's possible. And then you can see across the bottom what the totals are and how those compare. Now it ends up being, uh, a driving force in a number of schools, essentially whether or not they have a pool. Okay, so here we have swim and dive, et cetera. On this, um, it's like on, on these like, you've got 20 sports, but in that there were boys and girls.
Yes.
You know, so there's actually more than that. All total was 31, is that correct?
Uh, total that's.
That like if we have separated all boys and girls.
Yeah. Yeah. And the other thing too, these numbers can be a bit misleading because included here is just Minnesota State High School League. Sports, so like our trap team, which is run through community ed, our ultimate frisbee team, which is run through community ed, uh, our Nordic ski team, that's not on here, because some of these schools offer Nordic ski, uh, through their, through the Minnesota State High School League and through their activities department where we're unique and we offer it through community. And so the numbers again, statistics can be misleading in any direction, but I just want you to be aware of that. And the other thing with these numbers as well, if you look at, um, uh, Mr. Josh had mentioned, unique to Red Wing because we have a pool, certainly the case. Alpine Ski is, is unique to a school our size as well because of our proximity to Welch Village. And I don't know if there's any board members at the time, but when we got into the co-op with Northfield, essentially, we agreed to that as a no cost to our district, just essentially because Welch is, uh, w- within our tax base and then they're, um, providing that service within Northfield co-op. So even though Alpine is listed there, we only had two students that were participating as part of that. So, you know, you have, you might have one sport where we have 120 participants that's listed as one activity or sport. And you have one activity that, uh, doesn't have quite those numbers. So, uh, I guess I'm here to answer any questions you might have, just, uh, in support of what Mr. Josh had said. I tried to include the sort of the smaller schools within the big nine, some of the larger schools within the HVL, uh, and smaller schools than the HVL, and then just some Tri-City and Wasika just being very close to our state high school league enrollment and just the breakdowns there.
Where, where does, where do those enrollment numbers come from?
So it comes from our total enrollment and then the 40% is reduced based on your free and reduced population within the district.
So if you have a district that has a high percentage of pure reduced lunch, even though they may have a higher overall, um, enrollment, by reducing that, because a theory is, is that kids that, uh, may end up with free and reduce, or have some of those challenges, may participate at a higher rate as kids that are not, so that's the.
So it has nothing to do with like how many kids do you have in seven through 12 or how many students?
Well, it's based on nine through 12 enrollment and then your number is reduced and you're based on your free and reduced population.
But it's not a participation number.
No.
No, and it's not a one for one.
Those, you're talking about the numbers at the top?
Yes.
Why can't we have a, just a participant number there?
Well, it's based on, so where you're classified in a school and some, some members of the league have, have recommended that it's based on participants where you're, where you're slotted, so to speak. As we talked about in previous board meetings, we're moving from three A to two A in a few different sports, from two A to one A. And that's based on that number, that's state high school number.
And that high school league number would be the one most readily available.
Yep.
As well, that's a consistent number that's, uh, you should compare it purposes. So with that, like I say, this was an informational piece.
Yeah, I'm sure to answer any questions people might have.
People had asked for, so you wanna look at that a little bit further, but again, the, um, the primary one is that. And then most schools that are involved here, they either have hockey or they have wrestling. It's not very common where they end up having that.
Do, do you know, like, how many of these hockey yesers have their own rink that the district is funding?
I think I can safely say that we're the only one on that list.
I've heard the number thrown around that 10%.
Well, 10% of the arenas across the state are school district owned. Different way, they're city or some other ones.
And how do you feel, Paul? Like, do you feel like we're right-sized for the number of activities, athletic activities on here that we offer? You know, when I look at Red Wing with 529 students and 17 sports and then let's take a high comparison like Albert Lee with eight 27 or Fairbrough with 735 and they have 17, it seems.
Yeah, I think, I think if you look at just that number at the bottom, I, I do think that can be a bit misleading. As I mentioned, the Alpine Ski counts as one full sport. We had two kids that participated. They had a great experience with the Northfield. Correct, yeah.
So how do we interpret this? You know, in terms of like.
It's a, it's a loaded conversation, yeah. I mean, if you look at, you look at Wasika, who's very similar to us size-wise, right? Um, they have hockey, um, they have wrestling, they, uh, they don't have the swim and dive component because they don't have a pool. Um, look at Tri-C United, who just added swimming this past year, again, similar in our overall enrollment. They don't have the Alpine, they don't have hockey. Um, so yeah, I mean, and really it's, it's, you know, it's a value base of what your, your community reflects. Like, like what is important to your community and, um, obviously the, the hockey wrestling pitch was mentioned. We, we used to have wrestling, a robust program in the seventies and into the early eighties, we dropped that and we've never gotten it back. Uh, hockey's obviously been a very popular, uh, hockey's not on a chopping block. I'm just bringing that out because that comparison was brought up, uh, very popular activity in our community for a long time. So I think the activities you offer reflect the values that your community, um, wants to endure and wants to promote and wants to participate in.
So when you brought up like the Alpine skiing having no cost, even though there's just a few kids in it, does that factor in like the sports that have significant cost to them, you know, versus those sports that don't have significant cost?
When you say factor in.
So football typically has more participants than almost all of it, probably your highest number of participants.
Seven through 12, yes.
The, um, equipment requirements there are significant because you've got, again, safety equipment that kids gotta have. So if you're going to compare the cost of a football program to the cost of a basketball program or volleyball program, they're not even close. So if you're looking at, if you're looking at ranking these according to total expenditures, and then it looks like, what do you include in that? Okay, so maintaining a pool is an expensive undertaking. Uh, at the same time, the pool does have use within the regular school day, at least to a certain degree. Uh, hockey, if you take the number of participants there, boys, girls, that are only associated with a high school teams, which is a small number because it's only our schools, correct?
Our same JV for boys, yeah.
Okay, so you don't have a lot of kids relative to the overall cost if you were going to include the cost of the facility. And facility isn't readily, readily used during the regular school, but that's the nature of hockey. You know, it's, I don't know if anybody's figured all the way to do hockey in a dynamic model that, um, works, act upon hockey.
Yeah. Good stuff for the brands.
Yeah, right.
Similar, similar question, uh, in regards to facilities that we're trying to call hockey. How many, how many swimming programs, how many pools are owned by the high school or making the high school, not high school, school district? Do you, I mean.
I'm just, I don't know.
All in the conference, all in our conference, yeah.
They're not here either, all.
Mm-hmm. In fact, Century just built a new pool, um, Mankato's building a new pool, so yeah. No, we, we, we travel to the Rochester Rec Center for our section, sometimes our conference, which is a community pool, but, Rochester schools have their own, their own facilities there.
So I think I wanted to ask this, Paul, because, um, we clearly have had declining enrollment, significant blocks of students. Yet, you know, we've only added to activities and this is athletic with, you know, there's other activities in the school that cost money because they have paid advisors. Um, who is making those decisions, you know, in terms of do we hold on to what we have? Is it time to start cutting sports? If so, which ones? How is that decision made?
Yeah, good question. Mr. Fugue's talked about, um, surveys and sometimes the, the difficulty we've had in, uh, getting those surveys out. And there is a state high school league survey that we would like to give to students, um, which is actually mandated, which we haven't done for a few years, to look at the activity offerings that they're interested in on a, on a seven through 12 level, to see if we can project uh, current needs, future needs, uh, and then those activities. You know, uh, some have paid advisors, some are not paid advisors. Uh, it's a really unique way for a kid that's not on the football team, not on the cross country team, to feel connected back in with his school and his, or her, his or her community. Um, and it's, um.
And I'm not arguing like the value of activities for everyone, I just, from a budget standpoint, and that's where I'm going.
I understand, yeah.
We could also look, we can look down on this too, and look at like Lake City and Cannon Falls, the Rona Zepa, they all have 16 different activities and we have 17. So on, you know, on the top end, we're the same for them, bottom end, we're back the same too.
Yeah.
Have we, have we done, oh, sorry, we've done?
Yeah.
Okay. Um, have we done a, I don't know, it's gonna be, how is our participation? You know, I, I know like, you know, for example, football, I know we had some, we've had some old numbers past, past five years. How about everything else? Is it, is it right up there where, and I know that's a difficult question.
No, it's, no, it's, uh, it's a good question to ask. We had a, we had a COVID bump and I would say in this community, it was probably two years. But we've seen a steady increase in a lot of our activities since then, football being one of them. But, um, you know, I, and there's trends that not only occur in Red Wing, but there's trends statewide. So I don't want to go out and mention specific sports that may have had a small decline, but generally speaking, we're seeing similar numbers in Red Wing that we're seeing in some of these communities that are like us, if that makes sense. Size-wise.
Well, you know, lacrosse got popular for a while.
Yep.
Students from, I don't know if that's still on board.
And a couple of people wanted me to add boys volleyball. So you know, like there's those things and there is a process.
Yeah, there is a process for that.
For adding activities.
And there was a period of time a while ago where there was a very strong growing interest in girls hockey. And there was a number of schools, um, talking from past experience that worked to implement a girls hockey program. A lot of excitement at the beginning, and then after a few years, the interest fell off and then those programs ended up getting dropped. And some of those were in towns that were very prominent in hockey.
Yes, there's, the number of cooperative agreements in girls hockey throughout the state is on the rise. Uh, you look at a town like Rochester, they're always co-opting in girls hockey. And now we've, we've added Zembroda, uh, we had one participant on the girl's side, a few on the boy's side. But even though our numbers are down in, in girls hockey, I think Red Wing should be really proud of the fact that we haven't had to co-op in as many of these activities as some of our, and part of it's geographic too, just based on where we're located, right? Um, but those trends are not only seen here in, in our community, but, uh, throughout the state and the five-state area as well.
How does that, so we were doing a co-op with Northfield, right, for Alpine Ski.
Alpine Ski.
That costs nothing. So then you mentioned Zembroda, the Zepa, that's co-upping. How does, how does a co-op work?
Good question. Good question. So just from a financial perspective, so we get a cost per participant, which we're working on right now in the finance office, and if it costs two thousand four hundred and seventy dollars per participant, we bill that back to the, the school that is part of our co-op based on the number of participants that are in our program. Does that make sense?
Yeah.
Yeah, so.
So if we eliminated an activity and entered a co-op agreement with another district, so the kids still have access to that activity, would necessarily be, or there'd be a savings, but.
There wouldn't be a savings.
There would be because we're paying someone else.
And that model we've used with, with hockey, billing those participants back, is a model that's widely used throughout the state, and that's the model we would use for any type of cooperative agreement that, that we would venture into.
Is there people, did, is that something that's a goal to reach out to us for? The, the co-op?
Yeah.
On hockey?
Yep.
Did those kids come up through our?
Yes, and that was, that was one of the reasons they came up through our youth ranks, number one. Number two, if we didn't add them to our program for one, possibly two years, we would not have had a JV team, which would have been taking participation away from Red Wing kids, and that was, I think you guys were on the board when we agreed to this. And now that's the, anytime we're looking to enter into that, is are we going to take participation opportunities away from Red Wing kids? And by adding those boys, and we had, we had a couple of years with a few girls, it added more opportunities for Red Wing kids.
Is it appropriate to ask a school to join you?
Is it appropriate?
Let's just say hockey for us, like girls hockey, because you got Lake City and Cannon Falls, they don't nearby. I'm just, is it, you have to wait to be asked, or did you go out and ask?
Oh, yeah, I think those conversations, whether it be hockey or anything, happen all the time, informally, from AD to AD, from potentially superintendent to superintendent, those conversations occur. I had, just last week, I had somebody approach me about a, I won't mention the activity, but, and again, part of the issue with Red Wing, I think, is is that geographic piece, like, now you're then, if, if they're the host, usually the bigger school is the host school, now we're going to provide transportation to that school each and every day for that activity, those are questions. So, yeah, those conversations happen frequently.
Taylor, Taylor Hazy, lived in Lake City School District, loved hockey over basketball, and she's from Lake City, but her, you know, her dad goes over to school every day.
I'm glad you brought that up, because that, that's not a co-op.
I know it's not a co-op.
She opened and enrolled and was a student in our.
Saying, instead of having to open and roll, you know, are we, there's some parents that can't open and roll. They may live in the southern side of Lake City District, driving them up here and all that. But to co-op them, to approach them, to keep, you know, to get, to help the programs along, and help somebody else that wants to participate in an activity that they enjoy. By and large, if there is somebody who is passionate about, within their school district, about being able to participate, it might be a one-off, they approach their school system, and then they end up getting in contact with us. So if there was somebody from Lake City who was dead set that they really wanted to play hockey, or in any other school, typically, they approach their resident district and see what they've got. I don't know why they didn't approach the resident district, I don't know, but they should, should.
Are there any plans to cut this list as it seems today, will not come in future?
I believe there's one on the docket, is that right, Mr. Jesson?
Well, on the way talked about last month. Gymnastics, but other than that, we, you know, I sat down with Mr. Hardman and asked that very question. Do we have any, what are, which of our programs are paying, are we at a point where we can't even use the terms financially feasible, because again, we're looking at some of the more expensive sports, but the odds of the community being accepting or cutting those sports is very small. So, you know, if we have, we have just a few kids that are participating, and the expenditures end up being kind of high, so that's why we only have the one that we have talked about. Any other questions? Thank you.
Thank you for your time.
All right, finance update. Lisa was unable to join us this evening, so we don't have any. All right, then we'll move on to compensatory funding.
Okay, compensatory funding, there's another sheet that was behind the sports sheet there. So with that, Jeremy had asked a question last month about compensatory funding. With compensatory funding, I put together the sheet and it comes out of data, it's on DVD. But the biggest factor, actually the only factor, that plays into compensatory funding is the number of students that you have that are considered direct certification. So these are families that may receive some sort of educational benefits, it might be medical benefits, it could be certain pieces like that. If somebody is a foster child, they feed into that formula. It used to be there were forms that you fill out, the free and reduced lunch forms, or educational benefit forms, and that fed into the formula. We don't have any control over that whatsoever. So if you take a look at that sheet that I've got there, again, just for the board's use, so the biggest thing that drives the compensatory funding formula is called the concentration factor. So that's the sixth one over from the left. So that concentration factor, there's a formula that goes into that, but the higher your concentration factor, the higher the amount of compensatory funding you receive per pupil unit. So that is based on your free and reduced percentage, it's not a one-to-one, that's a no different deal. But if you look here, Albert or Fairbough, for example, in Fairbough, two out of three kids are on free and reduced lunch according to the direct certifications. Okay, so as a result, the amount of compensatory aid that they get per kid is about twenty-four hundred dollars a year, all right? Here in Red Wing, our free and reduced lunch rate is less than half, or is about half of that, thirty-seven percent, which makes our concentration factor at point four seven. We only receive seven hundred and twenty-two dollars per pupil. So right there, there's a seventeen hundred dollar per kid difference in the funding that we receive, and that's only one funding stream being compensatory. Then you take the other pieces of that, which are Title One, Title Two, Title Four, all of those are all based on that, and we don't have any control at all under the current rules over the number of kids that are fed into the compensatory formula. It's all based on those factors that are, you know, families have those decisions or those needs. So it ends up making a pretty significant difference, so just wanted to kind of explain a little bit of that.
So when you say we have no control, so if we know the parents, kids.
We strongly, we still strongly encourage families to fill out the educational benefits form in the fall. Okay, or if they happen to enroll any time during the school, because there's other things that ends up, again, being a benefit for them. You know, participation fees that they have for some of our sports activities and some of those different kinds of things. There's some other things that they are beneficial, but it doesn't affect this funding stream.
And when did we, because when I, we were up at, or I was up at the, our Lani Day, MSBA Mesa, and one of the things that we were talking to the legislators about was changing this so that it's not just direct certification. And it also included, because when we were doing forms, the educational benefit forms, weren't we getting?
We were getting more.
More.
Yep, so then the difference there, this year, roughly three hundred and fifty thousand dollars versus, so we'll add direct certs versus this. So they're talking a little bit about making some sort of change in the compensatory formula, because there's some school districts that they saw their compensatory rates skyrocket. I mean, they're receiving a lot more money than they did before, and then there's other districts that, that knocked out. So that's what the, some, some of that talk was about at this point.
And the free and reduced has been regained kind of because of the, the free lunch, the.
Well, and that's the other thing that, that was part of it, because now that everybody has free breakfast and lunch, that was why there was a concern about having people be required to fill out the educational benefits form, because there was no incentive for them to do so. So that was screwing up the formula. So it's one of those deals where they made some changes, let us say, later the last couple of sessions, that had unintended consequences that they didn't account for.
And I just thought, so there is a deadline to fill out those forms though, right? Because I know last time you said it like had come and gone.
So they, they use, and it's October one, it's 10 complicated, I don't know, but basically it happens, like, I believe it's December fifteenth.
So my question is, what happens to a family that doesn't fill it out? They're getting free and reduced lunch, because of all of this, and then they decide to go out for a winter or spring sport. They need criteria to get aid, but they never filled out the form, and now it's too late. What do we do with those kids? Do we just take it out of our general fund, or do we expect them to pay the full amount? You know, because.
Mr. Hardman, you have an answer for that, I don't.
If they apply for a scholarship, it's been the general practice that we will grant them at least fifty percent for the scholarship.
And where does that scholarship come from? Like our general fund?
Yeah, the, the, it was portion of the budget.
And for waiting task days, I accept them at any time. So he's all like, right, you can come up, that's the way, easy to get some training. So how, how do we incentivize them? Get them out so that we are not dipping into our.
Here's the thing with that.
Budget.
So here's the thing, though, people's circumstances change sometimes too, at different times, and so sometimes it's not a matter of the form, the circumstances change with the time that changed for them. So like, a family had more, you know, means to go for a test in the spring, now they don't. Why would a kid suffer from taking an ACT or any other test in that circumstance? And so like, I would just encourage to think of it from that manner. We continue to try to encourage it, it's offered, we queue our code into stations, the first thing we ask parents to stop at when they come in. Ask folks to try to do educational pieces around that, encourage things like, there are things that are associated with it beyond just meals, because folks must are very well aware of that. Meals for all, this is a big, you know, mistake for other states.
So just want to put this together to kind of show what we're talking. So I might have missed it here, what do we do about next year? How do we get this? Right now, we don't, we don't know what, if there's going to be any change in law, whether or not we talk about them allowing the use of the filled-out forms again, to be part of that formula, in which case then we've got to be very diligent and encouraging as many people as possible to fill out the form. And it's one of those things, a lot of times people think that, oh, we're, you know, we're in good shape, you know, we're not going to qualify, but the thresholds are such that they probably, they might qualify. You know, and so the only way we can tell is if people fill out the, people fill out the form. So just being able, like Mr. Fuge said, we've got, we've got stations set up in the fall, we've got different things that have been held on at twin blocks, different events to encourage people to fill those out, and we do the best that we can with it, but again, you know, no, there's never a way to do it.
Can you take it with sports registration, like fill this out while you register?
Thinking about.
Or at least for the first two seasons?
So again, you can encourage, but you can't do what? It just seems to me, with today's technology, filling out forms are one of the last things people want to do. There's got to be a website to go to, so show something that they complete something.
They had a QR, they had, Josh was saying, they had a QR code.
Yeah, but people.
It takes you directly to it, but it's still something you have.
But it's got to be something that you need.
But you're on the center.
It should be something tied to it to, to complete it, instead of just saying, please complete.
Okay. If you get the funding, whether you fill out the form or not, like, why would you fill out the form?
Right, that's where, that's where it troubles, and there was, a few years ago, there were some schools that got kind of creative in which they, one of the few, fill out the, the form, then you got a family pass to, a family activities, something like that. Well, this is a federal program, that got caught wind of, and that got shut down. You know, so using some sort of reward system to get people to fill out, can't do that.
What's important, because you just make it as easy as possible.
Yeah.
So like, I would just say, it's my recommendation, like, QR code was a good thing, but I honestly think that we should have, like, Chromebooks easily set up, where folks have, like, a private space to, like, do it, you know, help. That someone's there to help them do it. That would be my recommendation for folks, as an easy piece, just to have like five or six Chromebooks set up and say, okay, this is the form, it's useful. It can help people out with it.
I like that some of the point, when I taught in middle school, we had people in the library that would help parents get signed up for a school view, so they could do it right there at open house.
We're, we're still offering it all, but a lot of this is public perception. The parents go like, I make too much, it's not going to affect them. I mean, that's the attitude. It may not be when you do qualify.
Yeah, you make them, but, but please do this because, and. And it's a very private process, nobody, I mean, it's still a very, you know, small number of people that have access to that data and whatnot. But the difference in thirty-seven percent to just over forty percent for our district alone is six hundred thousand dollars a year.
Right.
So I'm saying, that's a big jump. It's not filling out the paperwork, so there's a reason why, because I think if I had children here, I fill out so much paperwork, now I got to fill out something else. There's some way to do it easier, incentive, I know you can't do incentive, but.
I would imagine you have a list, though, of the, the students who receive free and reduced lunch. Can you target them with like an email? I mean, they're obviously identified.
But, I mean, it's under the current, under the current system, but those forms don't feed into this. They may in the future, but right now, they don't.
Remind me, what, what metric are they using to, to get us to point four seven concentration?
That's, it's a formula, so, I mean, you take the number of students times the, I think it was the free and reduced percentage, times point six, and we come up with this concentration. So.
But if, and, and, I'm not trying to, sorry, Hardman, here, I'm just, but if we're, if we're doing the, you know, if they don't have a free and reduced number anymore, right, or is that coming here, that's?
That comes from the state, so if somebody applies for any sort of assistance, let's say, they end up with help with their medical insurance, okay? That is at the state level, that feeds into.
Okay, so there is, there is still accurate numbers of, oh, yeah, I mean, qualifying kid, okay, that's, that's what I was, yeah, that's my, that was.
We still have some, but it's probably, if we were using free and reduced, these educational benefit forms, the kids still had to apply, there were many, many families that the only assistance they got was when they turned in that form for free and reduced school lunch, because they didn't need any state or county services, and that's the problem, is that it's going by people who are using state and county services.
And that's the problem the state's having right now with divesting up the funds, is that right now, they can only get it down at the county level, so every school in that county would get the same amount of money based on whatever the concentration is from the county, but not all schools have the same concentration. So you could have a school that needs absolutely nothing, but they're going to get that funding, but the county won't.
And they suck the medical assistance and staff benefits for the.
And we'll find out after this legislative session on what, if there's a change or.
Oh, you know, well, yeah, they'll, they'll let us know if there's a change.
How attentive your mom just is.
Cross your fingers and cross your eyes. And supposedly a week to go. Overtime.
All right.
Thank you for this.
Any, any others, any other questions on that at all?
I'll, I'll just say we have to come up with some way to try to get that number.
We want to maximize it.
Board of referees is the best idea for next meeting, it's a pizza.
Fine, fine.
Pizza party. All right, next up, three-year, three-year review policies.
So these are just policies, don't have any changes, you can see what those are, so that'd be a standard piece. We don't have any books.
Oh, no, okay. Lastly, Jefferson. Uh lastly, Jefferson Building.
So Jefferson Building, so obviously we've been talking about this forever. Today I contacted Kennedy and Grayson, uh they are uh legal services about updating the RFP that we used last time. So when I talked with the person there, she was actually the one who wrote it in the past, I said, can I modify the dates and then send that into you, just had to do a quick review on it? She said, yeah, she said that will work fine, she said there should be no reason for it to change in a substantive manner, so um my intent is that I will have that RFP uh ready for the board to approve uh at the end of this month. So then, the way I envision it would work, so um you would have hopefully rec- or approve that recommendation, that request for proposals in May, then we gotta advertise it for X number of weeks, and then we gotta give opportunity for people to do the property if they so desire, and then have a set date, uh the likelihood of being able to get that completed in June is really, really tight, so my plan here is that for the July board meeting, we would have a bid opening and be able to accept bids at that time. Anything come with the city, so I did have a conversation with the city surrounding that, there may be some potentially some possibilities with the port authority, not with the city directly, but there's uh, don't have any detail on that, that was strictly a possibility, um we'll see, but we're at, like, or this just has to get rolling.
Is that gonna, do you know if that was gonna come up, if there is a city meeting tonight at all, or is that gonna be internal or the port?
I don't know the.
The, the, okay.
The last time, we, a couple of times it did, that the superintendent then, they would put a clause in there about and maybe it's wrong from running a lot of houses, it definitely puts earners money down, and we got stuff with attorney fees and advertising and all that, and got nothing out of it. Right, so, so there's that in mind, I've, I've taken that into consideration, changing those steps. I did all this stuff from the launch, I believe it, so.
Do we need to be prepared as a board for possibility that we're gonna sell this to somebody for a dollar just to, you know, make the expense of maintaining the building?
I think every, every option should be on the table.
With interest, credit, whatever that, and everything else, I would. Hopefully not.
Um, all right, so that was, you know, there's everything that I have.
Other topics?
Yeah, can we have a that so much is gonna happen in the next seven days? The legislature's gonna move, can we get an update on the educational part pieces that they may or may not pass?
Yep.
The outmove bill or whatever bills they are, we'll, we'll all hear whether they're going to overtime or not, if the governor calls a special session, we should uh, and we'll probably get something on the speed anyway, but maybe we should have a conversation at the workshop in June.
Yep.
Yeah, typically what I, typically what I do is I give a a recap of the things that impact us at the educational level, so it'd be anything from any changes to the funding formulas, to mandates, different pieces that um are required, so usually I put together a summary that would include our items, maybe even if we have the information by our next meeting on the, what is today, the twelfth?
Yeah.
So we'll meet on the twenty-sixth, because it's.
Twenty-seventh, yeah, so maybe we'll have some, maybe we'll update them too.
Yep.
Thank you.
All right, well, is that something MS, MSBA probably?
They'll send out something too. There's a number of entities that will do that, and it's kind of nice to gather information from multiple sources on that, because you know, they all get included, but sometimes one, not the size of one, wouldn't. And I guess the other thing is, if we're gonna have a conversation on what the school year's gonna look in twenty twenty-seven, we should start those discussions now instead of later.
Yep.
And all that's, we, yes, we've got a lot.
So many things to do.
Yes, it was a key word, well, uh there's things, obviously, we've got a lot of internal discussions, but we've been trying to kind of narrow down and narrow down the path, but we don't need to do your, we don't need to do the job, but we should have have a conversation with you as to what you're seeing and, and doing and keeping us informed as to uh, because we're on the, we're kind of on the cusp of, I think, a tipping point, and we'll be able to share some of this information a little more about.
Anyone else? Good. All right, upcoming meetings, uh since uh Monday the twenty-sixth is Labor Day, or March, March, yeah.
Sorry.
Don't, don't get something.
Uh will be the Tuesday the twenty-seventh, um yeah, we're good on that? Invite, invite follow. Jim? Motion to adjourn.
Wait, 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 wait.
Sure. Just a minute.
I know, I love you, Jim.
Let me start the clock here.
Hey, James, he's loud. You got less than three minutes.
Okay, I just wanted to ask people that um Wednesday this week is the feather ceremony. Five thirty in the auditorium.
Native American Day.
Yes, yeah.
Yep.
And the Hispanic one, I had to double check, is it eleven AM on Friday in the Little Theater?
Yeah.
November, September, nine, girl, double.
Yeah, so.
And GCD, when is that one?
I have not gotten those dates yet.
That's gonna be an update for.
I'll just send a little. That's a shortish two minutes, you thought.
I don't think you.
Motion to adjourn.
Second.
All right, motion by Mr. Bryant, second time, Mr. Schoenfelter. A discussion. All of the favor, all right?
Aye.
Aye. Motion to cast.
And please, if you have the opportunity and the time, we're currently in a situation to uh attend the conference this year.